All right. Thank you all for being here tonight. We'll call the February 7th, 2024 Planning Commission to order. Before we get into our agenda items, I wanted to recognize Dr. Francis Cody and his students that are here from MTSU that are part of the urban planning department. Thank you all for being here. I understand, Matthew, y'all have an internship that is going on with that particular class or with MTSU?
Yeah, we have an internship that Dr. Cody, that we've worked with Dr. Cody on over the last year or so. This is our second semester of having an intern from his class and work with the planning department for a semester. Great partnership that we have with Dr. Cody and MTSU, and we look forward to continuing that partnership for years to come and helping expose his students to the world of city planning here in Murfreesboro.
That's great. Well, thank you all for being here. We appreciate it. We'll move on to our agenda items. First item is determination of a quorum, which we have. We no public comments, so we will move on, which is the approval of the minutes of the January 10th and January 25th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting. Any additions or edits to that that we need to make?
If there are none, a move for approval.
Second? Have an emotion in a second.
Ms. Ava Water?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
All right. Our next item is our public hearings and recommendations to City Council. Before we get into this, just a reminder for folks that may have not been to this public forum is we ask that you say your name and your address when you address the Planning Commission. If you will keep your comments to three minutes, which will allow everybody an opportunity to speak on the topic that they would like to speak to. And please direct all your comments to the Planning Commission. At the end of the public hearing, we will address all questions that come up during the hearing itself. And with that, we'll move on to item A, the zoning application for approximately 3.97 acres located alongside Southgate Boulevard and Westgate Boulevard to be rezoned from commercial highway and commercial fringe to PUD, Westgate Commons PUD, Southgate Developers LLC applicant. Mr. Barbie?
Good afternoon, Murfreesboro Planning Commission. This application for rezoning is approximately 3.97 acres located at the southwest corner of Westgate Boulevard and Southgate Boulevard. The existing zoning is both commercial fringe and commercial highway. And like I said, they are requesting a rezoning to planned unit development by the name of Westgate Commons. The surrounding properties to the north, east, to the north and east are all currently developed as hotels. There are auto repair businesses. There is a contractor's rental business as well. Directly across to the east, there is a Mapco Express that has an approved site plan for a truck fueling facility. The properties to the west are all zoned residential duplex and developed as residential attached and detached single-family dwellings. The property, the principal use for this property once rezoned will be for our contractors' construction, equipment sales, and rental and repair business. There are multiple other uses that are provided for in this PUD as well, but that will be the initial use, and that's what we intend to see as the first use in that structure. The site will consist of one principal structure that contains a reception area, showroom, offices, restrooms, and employee areas, along with an approximately 10,000 square foot warehouse space. There's also included with this application is an outdoor storage area for both the storage and maneuvering of equipment, parking for employees and customers, and a stormwater facility that's located to the west of the property adjacent to the single-family dwellings. The residential zone property is proposed to be protected through the use of a type E buffer. The type E buffer is 20 feet wide and is planted with three rows of broad-growing evergreen trees. In addition to the plantings, they are also including a berm as a part of the buffer design. And the developer is, in addition to that, providing a one acre green space along that same western side of the property to provide additional buffering, separation, and privacy for those residential homeowners. The Westgate Commons development has two primary entrances along Southgate Boulevard, as you can see on your screen, with a second gate, or with a secondary entrance along Westgate Boulevard along the northern property line. Provided for in this pattern book is a list of two exceptions. They're requesting an exception from the foundation landscaping requirement, where it would only be required along the east side of the building. That's the side adjacent to Southgate Boulevard. That would be the side you can see here on your screen. And the reason for that request is because the access and maneuvering areas for equipment and vehicles are directly adjacent to the north, south, and western sides of the property. In addition, the second request is an exception to the overhead utility doors. They would be allowed to face the Westgate Boulevard public right-of-way, and to mitigate that impact, the doors will be decorative and will be screened with landscaping along Westgate Boulevard. Along Westgate, which is the north property line, they are including a privacy fence as well as landscaping to help screen that view shed from the public areas. Our future land use map shows that this parcel has, is intended for both neighborhood commercial uses as well as general commercial uses. We have that map here. And as you can see, this western area, most of that area, which is the neighborhood commercial, is actually where the green space is provided to help provide separation and privacy for the residential homeowners to the west. The bulk of the, bulk of the uses included with this PUD are generally consistent with the suburban commercial character and the general commercial character. However, the use that is included is more of an industrial use, but they have buffered and screened the bulk of the property from both public and private properties around there. Staff has supported this request for the following reasons. The majority of the land uses proposed are consistent with the approved Murfreesboro 2035 Comprehensive Plan and Future Land Use Map. Significant buffering and open space are proposed next to the adjacent residential uses to mitigate potential negative impacts from the proposed uses. Significant screening is proposed between the equipment storage area and the public right-of-way to mitigate any potential negative visual impact to the public areas. I believe Mr. Brian Grover is here with SEC tonight, and will also have a presentation. At the conclusion of the presentations, we will need to conduct a public hearing. After the public hearing has been conducted and closed, the Planning Commission will need to formulate a recommendation to our City Council. I'm available if you have any questions, and I believe Mr. Grover with SEC is also in attendance tonight.
Any questions for Mr. Barbie at this point? Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Brad Grover from SEC. With me tonight is Matt Taylor, also from SEC, and Blake Smith of Southgate Properties. I just want to say thank you for the opportunity tonight to present to you our request for the Westgate Commons rezoning. I'll try not to reiterate too much. The site is, as Brad stated, located just southwest of the South Church Street and I-24 interchange along the intersection of Westgate Boulevard and Southgate Boulevard. The site, as it exists today, is approximately four acres and vacant. Current zoning, it is a split zoning, so the west portion is commercial friends with the east side being commercial highway. The future land use plan foresees us pretty much maintaining that type of status quo for zoning type. The proposed land use that we are targeting for the end user of this PUD does not line up with the current future land use map being in the industrial land use type. But as Brad stated, we have worked with staff to create significant buffering and transitions to help mitigate any type of significant impact on those existing residential properties to the west and southwest of the site. Here are some photos of the site. This is looking west from Southgate Boulevard into the site. As you can see, there's nothing there today. A view from the southern property line looking north towards Westgate Boulevard, you can begin to see some of those other commercial developments that are on this site. Here's a close-up one of the commercial neighbors to the northeast of the site, just on the northwest side of the Southgate and Westgate Boulevard intersection. This is a photo of the residential area to the southwest of the site, as well as a view looking into the residential neighborhood to the west of the site from the intersection of Lily Lane and Westgate Boulevard. The plan, as we stated, is approximately four acres in size. There is one building on the site, 10,500 square feet, with approximately 2,500 square feet of that being dedicated to office space or storefront, storefrontage to house the approximately 10 employees for the site. The immediate area around the building is paved. That includes all the storage areas as well as the trailer storage areas on the west side to help mitigate and reduce the type of dust in the area. The commercial fringe portion of this site, which was on the west side, working with staff, it was requested that be left as as much open space as possible to help create that distance from the residential, residential side to the proposed application for the site. Not only do we be able to incorporate that into the design, but we're also proposing a type E buffer on the northwest and south side. That type E buffer would be, the type E buffer with a fence on the south side. The total open space allows us approximately about 130 linear feet from the west side before you get to the back of curb where the storage yard is, and about 55 feet to the trailer storage from the south side, providing a significant distance to these storage areas. There are several different types or a mix of fencing types associated to the site. This was to help balance safety and security, along with providing some aesthetic aspects to the surrounding area as well. The west side, as I stated before, the northwest and south side would have that type E buffer, with the south side implementing the option to include the six-foot fence. The west side, or the north side side along Westgate Boulevard would incorporate that vinyl fence. That is to help shield the roll-up doors on the north side of the building, although decorative in nature is what we were proposing for those, to help just screen those additionally, with the building frontage along Southgate Boulevard providing the decorative aluminum fence. And for the sake of security, chain link fence connecting to that black aluminum fence surrounding the storage yard to secure the site. The access into the site from Southgate Boulevard and Westgate Boulevard, all three of those entrances would have, once you're in the site, have access to the gates. The entrances along Southgate Boulevard would utilize a Yelp mode for those to allow, if for some reason merchant services had to get in, they could get in, with the Westgate Boulevard just being a typical rolling gated entrance. So characteristics of the architecture, it's going to be one-story with 10,500 square feet, max height of 35 feet. The front entrance would be well-defined, and the decorative doors on the north side facing Westgate Boulevard would be decorative in nature. Typical materials for the elevations would consist of brickstone, synthetic stone, and metal panels. Here's a floor plan of the proposed architecture for the site, with the office being on the east side along Southgate Boulevard. Here's a rendered elevation of the front of the building facing Southgate Boulevard. You can see here that the entrance is articulated. This is a elevation of the, pardon the subheading there, of Westgate Boulevard. So this is on the north side facing Westgate Boulevard, hence the decorative roll-up doors on this part of the elevation. The rear elevation's still having some character in terms of difference in material and patterns on the rear of the building, with the south side, once again, having those roll-up doors. Here's some sample photos of the site. This is the United Rental site on South Church Street. This is just showing you the typical kind of setup that they have. You'll see that there is no extremely heavy construction equipment. We're not dealing with full-size excavators or anything like that, and it would be a paved surface. The two exceptions requested with this PUD, one being the foundation landscaping on the northwest and south side, because of the heavy vehicular use in those areas and the roll-up doors, it really wouldn't make much sense to have that landscaping there within kind of that large concrete area. And then requesting, although we are screening and mitigating as much as possible, still requesting that overhead utility door exception along Westgate Boulevard. If you guys have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer those now or after the hearing.
Looks like, okay.
Thank you.
Right now, we will open up the public hearing for this application. Anyone that would like to speak for or against this application, please come forward. Sir, would you like to come up to the podium?
Yes.
You would give us your name and your address.
My name is Dennis Milner, and I live at 605 Ram Bush in the Blackman area. And I'm just thinking of the neighborhood. I've been involved in that. Some of our children have owned some of those homes. And my wife and I, we've had, we have five children. Well, my wife passed, but we, during that period when our children were growing up, four of them bought duplexes in that area. We thought it was a good thing for them to do, so we helped them out. Young children, well, they were 21, needed some help, and we did. And one of the whole bunch still kept it. He's very happy he did, although he doesn't live there anymore. Anyway, it's a good neighborhood. I don't know if you know it well, but it's it's just an all-around workman's area, working class area mostly is what it is. And right across the street, of course, the street I mean is Church Street, there's a great deal of industrial jobs available to people. And there's not too many places for rent. When there is, it's rented right away. I'm just concerned about how it looks to the people that have lived there and bought homes there. And I couldn't tell very much. I see some trees planted, and not quite sure about what the, the place that goes into the neighborhood is. I see different colors of plants. And I'm just, if we can, I'd like to be at the involvement of this new development as soft as possible for the neighbors. They've been used to just looking at other people's homes that live there, and all of a sudden they're going to come down Westgate or Lily, and they'll see an industrial area where there's, it kind of looks like one business that's just up the road on Southgate. And I, it's hard for me to see. Is there any way to make it softer for these people?
Mr. Milner, I think what we can do is, at the end of the hearing, we can go into real detail of what the type E buffer consists of that is, that butts up to the neighborhood. We can also talk about the buffer itself, because one of the questions that we had in the prior meeting was this buffer is raised and the landscaping is above it. But we can go into all of that at the, I think you will have some reassurance of what that buffer's going to do.
Okay. That would be helpful.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Milner. Anyone else would like to speak for or against this application? If not, we'll close the public hearing. I mean, someone better than me can describe it. Matthew, do you want to take it? But I was, I had some, Mr. Milner, I had a similar concern that you are bringing up, but what they described, that this was going to be, it's going to be a butt to the neighborhood, it's pretty substantial. But I'll let Matthew explain.
Yeah. And so first, I think I want to explain a little bit of context, because I think it's important to understand that the property is already zoned commercial. So there, there are some entitlements to the property being developed right now. And that property can be developed with commercial uses closer to the residential property than they are proposing in this plan. The reason they're requesting rezoning is because the use that they intend to develop on the property, and they're, they're reserving the right to include a wider array of commercial uses because, you know, they, you know, obviously that one business could vacate, and they would, you know, want to leave their options open. But the use that they want to immediately build on the property, the construction equipment sales and rental is not permitted in either the commercial highway or commercial fringe zones. So it's, it's the only industrial type of use that is, that they are proposing to permit on this property. The rest are commercial uses that, I haven't compared those uses to the commercial highway and commercial fringe zones, but I suspect that most of those zones, that most of those uses that they're proposing, in addition to the construction equipment, sales, and rental, would be permitted under the current zoning. But what they are doing, and this is kind of the beauty of the plan development process, is even though that construction equipment, sales, and rental is not a use that's permissible in the existing commercial highway and commercial fringe zoning, you're getting the opportunity to see what they're doing to mitigate the impact of that particular use, of any of the uses. And so what they're doing, and I think that commercial fringe zoning was left on the property to be somewhat of a transition to the residential uses to the west and to the south. And so what they're doing is providing greater amounts of green space and buffering than would be required under the current zoning. So there will be greater separation from those residential uses with this plan development than there would be with the existing CH and CF zoning. And so that's kind of the beauty of the plan development approach. There's a little bit of give and take. So they're requesting something that's not permitted under the current zoning, but in exchange for that, they're volunteering or asking you to consider that use. And in doing so, in good faith, they're offering additional green space, additional separation from those existing residential uses as a means to mitigate any negative impact. So as far as the design of the buffer, I'd invite Mr. Grover to come back up and discuss that buffer. And Mr. Barbie is much more well-versed in buffers than I am as well. So if you have any questions about, from a city standpoint, Mr. Barbie would be a great resource on that. But Mr. Grover, if you would mind?
Just trying to back it up here just a little bit. Okay. So that buffer on the northwest and south side, it's type E, so it's going to be 20 feet wide. And when you get to that type E buffer, there's actually different options you could have that have all been deemed to serve the same use. However, what we're displaying in this one is three staggered rows of broad evergreen trees. It is a significant amount of vegetation between any two users. Not only are we providing those evergreen trees, the way the site currently sits, in order to keep that detention pond functional, essentially, we're going to have like a raised berm around that. So we're going to get some extra height on all of those trees in the beginning as well. And with the addition of the fence option on the south side, you're going to get that instant six feet of solid screening upon installation. If you guys have any other questions about that, I'd be more than happy to.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you.
One thing I did want to mention that I picked up on in looking at, at, in watching Mr. Grover's presentation, is that the color of the material samples for the building are different than the color on the elevations. And I think that we need to get those to match as the pattern book, if it moves forward to City Council, so that there's no confusion about the proposed color of the building. And Mr. Taylor, I believe, can, Mr. Taylor and Mr. Grover can, can make those consistent if the application moves forward to City Council.
All right. Thank you. All right. Planning Commission, does anybody have any questions for staff and/or the applicant? And if not, do we have a motion?
Sub move.
Second.
Subject to all staff comments?
Subject to all staff comments.
Carolyn?
Ms. Ava Water?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
The motion passes, or that application passes. The next item on our agenda is a proposed amendment to the city zoning ordinance related to regulations for electric vehicles and pertaining to the following sections: Section 2 definition, Section 7 site plan review, Section 26 off-street parking, queuing, and loading, and end notes for Chart 2 minimum lot requirements, minimum yard requirements, and land use intensity ratios. Ms. Noel?
Good evening. Give us just one second here. I got it.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Okay. Okay. Okay. Okay. Okay. So, good evening, members of Planning Commission. With me not presenting very often, I'm not used to working with computers, so my apologies. The Planning Commission's notice, or the Planning Department notices the increasing demand for electric vehicles around town, and we have seen an increasing number of submittals for electric vehicle charging stations. With this demand and these, we've decided that we need to put in some regulations in place for these electric vehicle charging stations. This ordinance does not require any development to install. It basically is just putting in design standards for when a developer wants to voluntarily put in electric vehicle charging stations on their site. These design standards include dimensions, parking stall dimensions, screening requirements, and protecting vehicular drive aisles and pedestrian areas. The Planning Commission will need to conduct a public hearing on this matter and discuss and formulate a recommendation to City Council. I'm available for any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Noel? All right. We will open up the public hearing. Anyone that would like to speak for or against this application. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Any questions, comments, or votes on this application?
If there are none, I move for approval. Subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Have a motion, a second.
Ms. Ava Waters?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Silas?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
That application is approved. We will move on to the next one, which is the street renaming, to rename a segment of Blackman Road south of Pendleton Boulevard to Hartman Farm Court. City of Murfreesboro Planning Department is the applicant. Mr. Blomley.
Thank you, Mr. Halliburton. First of all, I want to thank Ms. Noel for her hard work on the zoning ordinance amendment. Zoning ordinance amendments are always, you know, are always a fun time to see what we have in our ordinance and see how we can improve it, and she put in a lot of work in that and, and put out a really good product. So we appreciate her work on that. This is a rezoning for a remnant portion of Blackman Road. Blackman Road is being realigned to meet up with the new intersection of Veterans and Shores Road. The, it's being realigned in conjunction with the West Lawn Commercial East development. It's leaving a remnant of Blackman Road at its very southern end. That remnant's going to be terminated in a cul-de-sac, and it's going to be intersecting with the new alignment of Blackman Road in a T-intersection. So it's going to be, it needs to be renamed as it's going to be a separate road from the new alignment. There are no existing addresses on the property that will need to, or along this segment of roadway that will need to be changed. There's an existing daycare, but its access will continue from the, from the realigned Blackman Road, and it will be able to keep its Blackman Road address. Back in October, the Planning Commission held a public hearing and to consider renaming this remnant segment to Blackman Beasley Court, and Planning Commission approved the recommendation at that time. The roadway has not been completed, but since that time, we as staff have reconsidered and are recommending this Hartman Farm Court. The city's property that it purchased, that was formerly owned by Middle Tennessee Electric, just to the south of where this segment is located, was owned by the Hartman family before Middle Tennessee Electric purchased it in 2014. And so we feel this is a way to honor that family of the property that the city now owns and is looking to develop with a variety of municipal uses. So we'll need to conduct a public hearing on the renaming of this segment to Hartman Farm Court, and I'll be happy to answer any questions before or after the public hearing. And unlike the last two items, Planning Commission, per the subdivision regulations, has, has authority over street naming, and so your action tonight will be final on the, on the renaming.
Thank you, Matthew. Do you want to have any questions? All right, we will open the public hearing on this application. Anyone here to speak for or against this particular application? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing, and any discussion, votes associated with this application.
If there are no questions, I move for approval. Subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Ms. Ava Waters?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Silas?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
All right, the next item, under staff reports and other business, we have a mandatory referral to consider the abandonment of a sanitary sewer easement located on property along St. Andrews Drive. S E C on behalf of Home Development Partners is the applicant. Mr. Aguilera.
Thank you, Chair Halliburton. Yes, good evening, Chair, and members of Planning Commission. We have, our first item under staff reports and other business is a mandatory referral application to abandon an existing sanitary sewer easement. This was submitted by S E C, and as you can see on the drawing here, I hope I just got an error. As you can see here on the exhibit, this shows the location of the sanitary sewer easement located on the western portion of the proposed site. This is for a proposed Murfreesboro Autism Clinic along St. Andrews Drive, which is currently undergoing the site plan review process. So as being requested from the applicant, the Planning Commission is being asked to consider the abandonment of the existing sanitary sewer easement. This is located on Lot Two of the New Salem Strategic Investments Subdivision, again, located on St. Andrews Drive. I'm going to go to the exhibit so you all can see this as well. This was submitted by S E C for your review. You can see here the proposed easement again, and its abandonment. Sanitary sewer easement is 20 feet in width and was dedicated via Final Plan back in 2015. The easement abandonment has been requested because the zoning ordinance requires a landscape buffer along the western property line due to the differences in the zoning and the land use. There is residential to the west, and so this necessitates a landscape buffer between residential and commercial. Per S E C, the forest main location and landscape buffer cannot coexist in this location, and so, again, as required, they will be, they will be required to move the sanitary sewer easement and abandon this previous easement that was dedicated back in 2015. Additionally, too, they will be required to, because as you can see here on the site plan, it is conflicting as well with the current existing, the proposed dumpster enclosure. The new plan that S E C is proposing with the Murfreesboro Autism Clinic, and this site plan you will see will be proposed here, going through the more into the parking lot, and it will be central there, and there's a label for that as well, which avoids any conflict again with the landscaping that is required, as well as the dumpster enclosure. Murfreesboro Water Resources has reviewed this request further and found no conflict with the abandonment and the relocation of the sanitary sewer easement for the proposed autism clinic. The request was reviewed at the January 23 Murfreesboro Water Resources Board meeting, and the board voted to recommend approval for the abandonment of the sanitary sewer easement. The Planning Department's project engineer also reviewed this request, and concurs that this abandonment and relocation is acceptable. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend approval of this request to the City Council, subject to the following three conditions. If approved by City Council, the applicant will be responsible for providing the information necessary for the legal department to prepare legal instruments for the transfer of the property. The legal instruments will be subject to final review and approval of the legal department. The applicant will also be responsible for the recording of these instruments and including payment of the recording fee. And the third condition is the sanitary sewer easement shall be recorded as necessary to accommodate any existing or proposed sanitary sewer infrastructure. I am here if you have any questions. Matt Taylor of S E C is also here, should you have any questions. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Aguilera?
No.
Thank you. No public hearing on this matter, correct? All right, Planning Commission, any questions, comments, motions?
So moved.
Second.
Subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Ms. Ava Waters?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Silas?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
That application passes. Next application is a mandatory referral to consider the abandonment of portions of a public utility easement on property located along Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard and Middle Tennessee Boulevard. Matt Taylor of S E C is the applicant, and Mr. Blomley's going to handle this application.
Yes, sir. I'll do my best to fill in for Ms. Kerr tonight. Our second mandatory referral request is for the abandonment of two small portions of a public utility easement on property located along Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard. This is the Mercury Plaza Shopping Center. We received a site plan this month for the owner of the shopping center to construct two loading docks at the rear of the shopping center as, as he prepares to lease to tenants to try to get the center leased up, and those loading docks will help facilitate operations for, for future tenants. Basically, the entire rear of the property, to the rear of the building, is one large public utility easement, and so in order to build those loading docks over the easement or in that area, it requires the abandonment of two small squares of that easement. So if you look at the, the plan in front of you, the areas colored in, in pink are the areas that they're considering for, or that they're requesting and that you're considering for abandonment, and those are the areas where they wish to build the loading docks. There are existing utility lines in those areas, and those utility lines, they're Murfreesboro Water Resources utility lines, will need to be relocated and potentially additional easements recorded for the relocated water lines. But the Water Resources Department has, does concur with the request, provided that all of the conditions are followed. And in fact, the Water Resources Board at its meeting last month voted to recommend approval of the abandonment. And so we would recommend approval of the abandonment request, subject to the following conditions. The easement abandonment should be subject to the final approval of the legal documents by the city attorney. If approved by the City Council, the applicant will be responsible for providing the information necessary for the legal department to prepare the legal document for this easement abandonment, including but not limited to any easements, or excuse me, any exhibits or legal descriptions needed. Number three, the applicant will be responsible for recording the legal document, including payment of the recording fee. And number four, approval shall be subject to the recording of any new water and/or sanitary sewer easements that are needed for the existing and/or proposed water and sanitary sewer lines at the rear of this property, as determined by Murfreesboro Water Resources. Now, I will mention, as this is a public utility easement, we did contact all the utilities, Atmos, M T E, Comcast, A T and T, and none of the other utilities had any objections or comments regarding the abandonment. We try to do that every time we have a public utility easement, since it's open for use by any public utility. So we would recommend approval, subject to those recommended conditions of approval. Be happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, I'm glad this helps spur some redevelopment over there. So if there are no other questions, I move for approval. Subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Ms. Ava Waters?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Silas?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Any other business that needs to come before the commission this evening, Matthew?
No, sir.
All right, we're adjourned.